Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 3 regular meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. If you please take note of the exits in case you need to leave quickly. And please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is Groupman. Can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We received notice that there is an additional engineer who has been asked to look in on the plans. And so they have asked for a continuance till next month as she comes up to speed on the plans. There's not much left to pull together, but you know, there's been some discussion about sizes of buildings and how much is left for conformance for that additional building. So this new engineer is coming in, actually she was there, I think, for our first meeting, Yolanda Jensen. And so she's reviewing the materials, she'll be meeting with our consultants. And come March, we'll see what she has to say. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? Come on up. State your name for the record and speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Betty Dongo. I know we're still having issue with where they want to put their driveway and stuff off of Molford Avenue to go into their buildings and stuff. But I'm on the watch out there all the time because there's still, you know, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. I know people that, you know, say they've gone down there from these offices and said they didn't really see a lot going on, but a lot of stuff does go on.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay. I just have some pictures that was taken in front, not in front of my house, but right in the area of...
Now, you are right there, right next to his property as soon as you come in onto Molford, right?
The driveway for the house there that, you know, that...
Your driveway and the proposed driveway will be like right next to each other, correct?
My neighbor's driveway is, would be the closest one to her.
What number are you at?
I'm at number seventy.
Okay.
Okay.
The driveways kind of line right up next to each other?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, but we, I, my husband took these pictures, this one day, an oil man came to deliver oil to the ladies next door, the lady next door. And I just, I just wanted to show these to you because this shows you a good portion of what I'm trying to tell you about this, okay? I mean, the first picture is how he is parked, okay? This is, this would be Mr. Groupman's property over here. And this oil truck had to park out there in order to be able to back in to her driveway.
Was he going into your neighbor's driveway?
Yeah.
Okay.
To park into her driveway. She couldn't make it tonight because she's ill, okay? And then when he got done with her, he had to go back out there and park again while he was doing whatever it was he was doing. But I mean, this is, it's a dangerous spot right there, especially now with the winter, you know? And even in the summertime, when people stop there, it's, it's not a good sight. It's not a good thing. I mean, people come flying down off of Route nine or come flying up the hill to get up to Route nine. And I, I just worry about that extensively. I really do.
I understand, I understand. Will you be able to leave those pictures with us?
Uh, yes, I can do that.
Can you like date them so that we know what, when they were taken?
One of them has a date on it. They were all taken the same day.
Okay, good, as long as some, one of them has a date on it.
That was the day we had snow this morning.
That was the one, that was the one day, yeah, so, okay. Okay, great, if you wouldn't mind giving them to our secretary and she can make us copies and we can all take a look at them. But we do understand your concerns. Right now, all they're proposing is not an actual driveway to parking. It would be a delivery-only driveway.
But the issue with that is, the last time I was here, I remember them talking about, you know, they were going to put up, you know, chains or whatever it was to block off...
Yep, they were going to put up some kind of a block there.
So it's going to be the same problem because those trucks are going to have to park there in order to get out, go in, unlock the chains, you know? And then they're going to be coming back and forth to get, you know, i- if he parks here where this truck is parked, you know, which is right in that area where that is, okay? He's going to have to get out, unlock his chains, come back and get in the truck. Now he's going to have to back the truck down.
Research the gate.
Okay.
Right, right.
And then if people are trying to get up over, off the top, you know, coming from the village, coming up the hill.
Right.
You know, to go to the store across the street, then, you know...
Well, this type of information is really helpful. And the new engineer, when she looks at it, perhaps can do it so that they don't have to be in the road. But yeah, I'm hearing what you're saying because you'd have to stop and go and undo something and then...
And I know my neighbor doesn't want them parking in her yard to be able to do all that stuff. And I sure don't want them parking in mine.
Right.
You know? And I have children, she has children. You know, we have to watch out for all of that stuff.
Right, understood. No, we appreciate those pictures, though. And we'll share them with applicant and his engineering.
Okay. Do you know when the next meeting will be?
Um, we're, we're proposing to adjourn this to March 2nd.
To March 2nd, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, I'll make copies. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
So I'd like to ask my colleagues if anybody else has more comments on this? I'll start to my left. Oh, is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment on this? Okay, thank you. Ms. Kane, do you have any comments on this?
Only that, I'm looking forward to seeing what the new engineer proposes and take these comments and pictures into consideration. And it'll be an interesting discussion in March.
I agree. Mr. Murphy?
Nothing.
Mr. Oliver?
Not at this time.
Mr. Napoli?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to March 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a new public hearing next up for Hutchins-Statsburg Storage. In there, we've just recently had them before us. And when they went to get their wetland permit from the DEC, the DEC had some issues with the arrangement of their redesign and the proximity to the wetlands. So they've asked for some modifications. So they have proposed a site plan amendment, which looks like it will be satisfactory to the DEC and to us. We are currently waiting for a response from Dutchess County Planning and Statsburg Fire Department. We had hoped for an expedited review, but we'll have those ready for us at our next meeting. And we also need the new set of plans and also need to notify the adjoining property owners.
We did that, and DEC, Dutchess County Planning came in.
Right, but that's, yeah, but we're not prepared to take any action.
Right.
Because we also have not heard from Statsburg Fire. But we do understand that the applicant has spoken with Statsburg Fire Department and we should be receiving something from them also.
I make a motion, we open the public hearing and continue it to February 17th.
Well, let's do the first part of it. Do I have a second for opening the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to February 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this is now to February 17th.
Close the hearing, I guess, or...
No, we're continuing it, continuing it.
That's right, alright.
So our next one is Malkarni Professional Center. And feel free to come on up and state your name for the record.
My name is Naveen Sidharus.
Into the microphone, this is actually broadcast and...
My name is Naveen Sidharus. I am the architect for Malkarni. And I am trying to get, you know, the...
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit? I cannot hear you.
Yeah, feel free to sit, sit down and, and put it, put the microphone comfortable so that you can... Okay. My name is Naveen Sidharus. I am the architect for Malkarni Contracting. And we were trying to work with the sign because there is an issue with it as it exists. We thought it was grandfathered in and I was informed that it had to comply. In complying, we would have to drop the sign in height. Width is fine. And if we do so, it's a two-sided sign, it would not be visible from the other side because the property north of us jumps up about four feet, the rock outcropping there. So Ted was kind enough to propose, why don't we move it to the south of the property where it would be more visible? And I said, that sounds like a good idea. If we have to make adjustments to it, I have no problem doing that. And then she informed me about the new grant to, to create the sidewalks and some plantings and stuff. And I said, if we need to take a foot or two on our end, the depth of my parking lot allows me to give away a little bit of space if needed. So I have no problem with that. The only thing that we were waiting on is to find out exactly what is the plan so that I can work along with it. There's no sense in me suggesting things when they might not work with what's proposed.
Correct.
She did send me a copy of the rendering that they're showing, which looks lovely, but I have, there are no dimensions or anything.
My understanding is that that rendering, all it's showing is that the improvements are all in, are all contained in the DOT right-of-way.
Okay.
So they're not in, they don't encroach on anybody's property.
And, and like I said, if we needed to, we're fine with that, we have no problem with that.
Well, at this point, that's not in the plans for that. So I know when you had spoken with our chairman, Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
And Tad Moss, you had been talking about possibly striping and doing, pushing in your parking a little bit and creating like these little striped walkways?
Well, I, I...
Right, at your original meeting, you had, you had discussed that.
Yeah, it was based on their saying, you know, we need to create sidewalks or something. And I said, we have some depth. I have sixty-eight feet from the edge of the property to the building.
Since that meeting?
Yes.
We have confirmed that the town did receive a tap grant, which will take care of sidewalks from the southern edge of the Hyde Park Plaza, all the way down to the Quality Inn.
Wonderful.
And so what that means for you is that, and I'd like my colleagues to weigh in, is they're looking to pull all the engineering teams together this year and they plan on doing the construction in the spring of 2017.
Okay.
So that's within a year. So I wanted to talk about this with my colleagues because if they're going to be doing some extensive sidewalk renovations across that entire expanse, would we really want to ask them, this applicant, to do any kind of a striping, interim striping and moving parking to, you know, facilitate sidewalks in an area that is going to be getting them?
Until we get it all settled in.
Yeah, I agree.
Just, you know, move the sign.
Okay, so...
Well said, Jen.
Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Napoli?
I'm all for just moving the sign.
Okay, great. So what I think we're going to need, and I know Tad sent you the, the information blocks for the planning board, all we would need is for the survey that you have?
Yes.
To be updated, to have the signature blocks that we need for a site plan.
I don't, I don't know if I have that information from Ted. I know it was mentioned to me when we spoke.
Oh, okay, you did not receive her email of, I think it was sent yesterday, and it had attachments in it?
I did download the application.
Right, it had the application.
Yes.
It had another piece, when you look really closely, it's where the chairman would sign for the signature for the site plan.
I don't know if I didn't get it or I didn't see it, so I'll check again.
Okay, there were three attachments on there.
And if not, I will just call him.
Right, and you can, you can easily get them here.
Yeah, no problem.
But basically, you're going to take the survey and you're going to note where the new sign location is going to be. And I believe she also said, note where the parking spaces are?
Yes.
And also to note which area on the building is the retail space.
Yes, which I have started to prepare.
So fairly basic.
No problem, no problem on any of that.
Okay, excellent. Then when we get that, what we can do is we can type the action and we can circulate that to Dutchess County Planning.
Okay.
That they're going to need to see that as part of the 239-M referral.
Okay.
All right? So I would say, if you don't have those attachments, let us know and we'll get them to you tomorrow.
Yes.
And when you get, when you pull together the survey so that it is site, a site plan? If you could submit that to us, then we can have it ready at the next meeting and we can type the action and circulate.
All right. On the application, I'm a little bit lost because this seems to be more for like if you're doing...
If you're doing out, external improvements, other than just moving a sign. A lot of it does not, exactly.
Any explanation to say.
And Tad can definitely help you with all of that, those details.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
No, it is, it's mostly for projects that are looking to do, you know, any number of external improvements to the site. And really, you're looking at just one change to the site.
Okay, all right, that's no problem on my end, you know, I can definitely do that.
Okay, great.
So it's the application?
Right, once the application gets submitted...
And the new drawing?
Yep.
With the location of the sign?
Yep.
And the, the signature blocks?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
I'll have to figure out how that goes. I had a question, actually, about the proposed...
Okay, I'm not sure I can answer, but ask away.
That's okay, I just wanted to find out because, you know, I see a center, green, you know, median of sorts. If somebody wanted to pull in into the parking lot coming, traveling south, how would they do that?
Oh, you mean it looks like there's a barrier there?
Yes.
I don't, I'm not familiar enough with that grant, but I doubt that that is the case.
I mean, this could be just a rendering that it looks really nice and shows the intent.
There's a bunch of different ones and I don't think they finalized what they're going to do and they'll have a lot of public hearings before they do settle on it.
Right, right.
Okay.
But what we do know is that all the work is in...
It is an issue right now. I mean, I see the turnaround here and all that sounds wonderful, but I didn't know if I'm coming from north and I want to turn into the side.
Correct. Yeah, you don't want to have, you don't want to have people blocked.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I wasn't sure.
I would doubt that that would be the design they go with.
Okay, this is a suggestive thing.
Right, I think that was just for artist's rendering and, you know, concept to submit for the grant.
All right, all right.
Okay?
No problem on my end for that.
I did have one more question for my colleagues, so. One of the requirements of site plan is to screen residential from non-residential. And in the very front of their property on the side right next to Route nine is a nice planting bed. And our chairman asked if we would, if we would want to consider asking them to plant anything more substantial in there, like shrubs or trees. And I just wanted to let you know that personally, I thought that if they're going to be doing work in that area, I'm not sure that our asking to have anything additional at this time would, would be helpful if it's going to need to be ripped out in, in a year.
Would be after?
Yeah, actually, speaking to that and, and to the sign...
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. In terms of, in terms of shrubs, and I'm relatively new to the planning board, but is it possible to put things on the site plan and say, these are to be done with the understanding that they're, they're to be done after the sidewalks are installed?
I'm not sure about that.
It's not really very enforceable anyway, it's something that the applicant...
Well, the site plan, the site plan would expire at a certain point if it, if these things are not done. You know, there's a time, once you...
And how long is that time?
I think we get a total of six months.
Oh, relatively short.
Yes, it's a period, in order to start substantial improvements. Now, if they, if they move the sign, that could be considered substantial and then they could get...
Extended.
Right.
Because my other thought is, I don't know, because the sidewalk plan is such an amorphous thing right now and what looks like a good location for your sign right now might not be such a great location once the final sidewalk plan goes in. And so, does it make more sense to give them some kind of waiver to have a non-conforming sign for the next year until, until the sidewalks are installed? And then say, you know, all parties agree that once the sidewalks are installed, we'll revisit the site plan for plantings and the sign? It's just a, just a thought.
That's an interesting thought.
Because I know I've, I've dealt with construction issues in the town and other places and, and what you think is going to be the plan is not always the plan.
Right.
You know? Right, if you have to move the, even, even if you have to move a curb cut, you know, a foot down, that can make a huge difference in the visibility of your sign.
Sure.
And, and the grades, as you were speaking to, are very different. And, and if they want to keep the turnaround where it is, maybe they want to put some internal road there instead of having, you know, your access from, sorry, from the south, southbound side of nine, maybe there'll be some internal road, I don't know.
Well, none of us know at this point.
Right, so that's why I'm saying maybe, maybe, and legally, I think we'd have to talk to our lawyer, but...
Right, right.
Maybe it makes more sense to just press pause.
Let's, let's move the sign and...
But that's an expensive thing for them to do.
Well, they're going to, they're going to have to move because of the grade anyway. And eventually, maybe not in my lifetime, the town board is going to enforce the sign order.
No, but they have to, they have to move the sign because of the grade only if they get a smaller sign. If they can keep the existing sign until the sidewalks are done.
Right, what you're saying is to allow the non-conformity to continue.
Until the sidewalks are done.
That, that's tough to do.
That's, that's, I, I like the idea of that. I guess what I would...
I don't think, I don't think the town board was saying...
I guess, I guess what I'm thinking of is that our zoning administrator, in looking at this, knows that there's these changes coming up. And so she was the one who helped to determine where this should go. And so my understanding of this project, too, is that it's basically just sidewalks and how they, how they move it in and out.
Okay.
And they have to be within DOT right-of-way.
Right.
Right, so I don't see anything, I think the whole point of this grant was to not impact any of the owners to have to do any kind of site plan changes or anything like that. I know that the attorneys are looking into any easements, but as soon as they heard that it's in the DOT right-of-way, I think that also takes that off the table as well.
Okay.
So...
I do appreciate your comment. I think it's, it's a very good idea because it's always, like we work in construction, I always say, don't do something if you know you're going to undo it.
Right.
Let's have a master plan so that when we move forward, it's, you know, if I go five feet, then I'm going five feet. If I'm not, then I should wait until everybody figures out where they're going.
Right, yeah.
But let me ask another question. If the sign stays where it is for the moment, I understand the lettering and the sizing and all that had to, has to change, especially with a new tenant coming in and all that. If we conform to these requirements as per the sign that I submitted, the only thing would be the height. The width, we're okay with, it's just the height. So is it possible to keep it at the moment where it is and make it, the, the lettering on it and everything conform so it's not...
Including the height?
Well, if I drop the height, that it's not visible from the other side.
In other words, bring everything into conformance?
I, I bring everything on the board in conformance. And once they figure out what they're doing with the front of the building and the, you know, the walkway or the greenery or whatever, then we say, okay, the idea is to just take it as is, for lack of a better description, and put it on the other side. And I would give dimensions at the time based on the plan that was executed. Because right now, it's guesswork. I don't know where they're going to come in, how far they're going to come in.
Excuse me, so if you did that, when you moved it to the new site, all you would have to do is adjust the height?
Exactly.
Interesting, I wish we had our consultants here. Because I do not, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have the answers for that.
She raised a very good question.
Yes, she does.
And, and I appreciate that and...
So, how about if we...
It's your step then done to move a sign.
Sure, it's a lot of work.
If we're going to do it, we will.
Right.
But at least let's conform with the format.
I'm, right, but it would still be a non-conforming sign. I mean, at the end of the day, it would still be a non-conforming sign.
A very tall sign.
Yes, no, I understand.
But at least everything else would be in order, would that be helpful?
Right, and I don't know how to answer this.
That's fine.
Because to me, this is a Tad and Victoria question. And they would be able to help us figure that out. But I would say that until we hear from them, we should actually pose this to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because if it is an option, if, I just don't know how they would work it.
I, I'm not sure either.
Right.
I am just, you know, taking her lead and saying, what about this? Because this way, at least we meet halfway, you know what I mean?
But I understand your trepidation about executing something only to have to re-execute?
Undo it, yeah.
When, right, if we'd had all the knowledge now.
We'd be, in essence, doing, doing something twice also.
Exactly.
Correct.
A non-conforming sign at a high, higher height, to only know that we're going to take it down in a year to move it again and have two approvals and it, that just...
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure of the process.
It's a wooden, it's a wooden sign right now, right?
The, the legs are posts, six by six posts.
And what's the, the rest of the sign, the board made of?
The board itself is wood, but the signs on it are vinyl.
So, so you could conceivably just cut it so that it's the right height and keep it where it is?
But they would, it would not be visible from the north, yeah?
It would be visible from the other side.
And they have, they have new retail going in that's going to need signage to be visible.
Maybe we should just move the sign or not do it?
And, and so I guess part of this is also your, you know, what you need. If, if, if it came down to it must be a conforming sign?
Right.
Then you would have to decide, do you want to leave it where it is and bring it into conformance? Or move it and bring it into conformance? I think that might be what it boils down to.
I was all set to move it.
I know.
But the question is, like she said, I put it here and it turns out that I have to put it here. So in essence...
So if you don't mind, what we'll do is we'll pose this question?
Yes, please.
To the attorney and to our zoning administrator.
I appreciate that very much.
Because there could be something there that I am unaware of that, that would allow that to happen.
That you can or can't.
Yeah.
I understand that, it's just a very good point that she raised.
Well, if you don't mind just waiting, because again, you don't want to do work to find out that, you know, you could, you could like proceed by putting the signature blocks on and parking and then waiting to find out about the sign.
That's fine.
Okay.
I can get everything ready and once I hear from you, then...
So what we'll do is, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Okay.
Which is February 17th. And in the interim, we'll have our attorney and zoning administrator figure out if there's a...
A happy medium.
A happy medium or an interim solution or...
I am willing to move it, but she raised a very good point.
Yes, she did.
For which all my, all my cohort here is like cursing me.
I, I actually enjoy it, I think that's a very interesting and very creative idea, so let's see if we...
Unfortunately, the law doesn't always appreciate creativity, so we'll have to see.
We'll see what the law has to say about this. Okay.
All right.
All right, so we'll just, you can just hold off on, but make sure that Ann has the, or if you didn't do the application, call Tad. Call Tad tomorrow.
We'll see Tad tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call you in the morning.
And she'll help you with the application.
See what we need to do.
Right.
And I'll, I'll...
And I will send them an email tonight, though.
I'm very willing to help out in any way I can.
Right. But I will send them an email and just, you know, detail the discussion that we had here and, and see if they can come up with an answer for us.
Good enough for me.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, nice meeting you.
You as well, thank you very much.
Need a motion for that continued?
No, because we're not in public hearing or anything, we're just going to add it to the next...
To the next agenda, on the 17th, same time, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll call in the morning and then we'll figure it out.
Sounds good. Safe home.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.[1774.63]
It is quite foggy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, next item on the agenda is Minuteman Press. They're here for a sign permit recommendation, of which we have one from our zoning administrator. I'm not sure I gave that out to anybody.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
No. I'd be reading the wrong one. Okay, so should I...
I have the one in the file, do, I have one, no, I just have one in my file.
Oh, no, she's got the extra file.
Oh, okay.
So do we have some discussion with procedure? Or do we just go ahead and...
So we, basically, Minuteman Press came in with a request for sign, signage, and we have a recommendation from our zoning administrator. And we've all seen the renderings. Does anybody have any comments about those or...
It's a fabulous idea.
Fabulous, fabulous?
I think it's...
There you go.
I hope it does wonders for that business and their visibility.
Yep.
Um, okay, resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A, Sub 4, Sub D, um, 4254 Albany Post Road, projecting sign replacement for parcels 6065-04-865194. Whereas, whereas, be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for Minuteman Press as submitted by David Meyerson. Latest revision date, January 12, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. There you go. Is there any other business?
No.
There's a, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, media committee.